Six thirty.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the day you blessed us with and thank you for each and every blessing that comes from your hand. We thank you for this opportunity to be together, opportunity to serve our community. I pray that you would give us discernment to make the best decisions. I want to thank you for our veterans and all those that are actively serving God to give us the freedoms that we enjoy here in America. We thank you for them, pray that you protect and take care of them. We ask all these things in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda. Let's see, approve of the minutes.
I had a chance to review the minutes, they appear accurate. Make a motion to approve of the minutes.
Please. Got a motion to approve. The minutes, those in favor, aye?
Aye, Allen. Please, both.
Minutes are approved, make them part of the record. Next item we have is recognition of visitors. And I know we got a few here. Does anyone have anything that's not on the agenda that like bring forward? Yes, ma'am, Miss Longmire.
I would like to talk about the Matlock Bean Landfill Modification Expansion Plan. Dennis, were you planning on addressing this, any of it?
Uh, I sent the thing to all the council members to look at, whatever was going to address this thing.
Well, that's good, they may have something then to add to it, to have a discussion. It was voted on at the last Solid Waste Commission meeting. There are several things that were voted on, I don't have all the information because the paper we got did not have the maximum information with it, the attachments, so I don't have that information. Did that come with your?
No, ma'am, here's what I have. Yours? No.
Oh, that's all right. Well, did you notice that it said that they were attachments? Some from Sandtech and some from Dr. Bacchus?
I've not seen any.
So, we don't know. Okay. I wondered about that because that's got information on it that's pertinent to this. But it was voted on, which at first Sandtech started out, they have a 20-year contract. They started in 2007 and goes till 2027. This thing that was voted on Tuesday night, Solid Waste Commission, gives them another five years, which it will now go to 2032. That added an additional two years. Well, the state mandates that issues like this, that give more time, have to be bid out. So, the five years in my mind that was given to them, that's a process that should go and be bid as state requirement. The landfill now is 151 acres, the footprint, it's almost full. They want to go over on new property that was purchased in the last few years that adjoins the landfill. And there was over 100 acres, little over 100 acres of that, and it was purchased with public money. But Sandtech wants to go over on to that property. They want to start out kind of using some of the soil to cover some of the sales, any other portion of the footprint. But that 151 acres is the landfill footprint from the beginning. It's almost full. So, when it's moved over on additional adjoining property, that's a brand-new footprint. To me, in my mind's eye, it starts a new landfill. There is information in the courthouse down there that says when the landfill was started, we were promised that it would, when it was full, that it would be closed. They also passed the Jackson Law that was to stop another landfill, and the Planning Commission adopted regulations that said there wouldn't be another landfill located within a five-mile radius of that landfill. So, this process has not gone before the county planning board, the Loudoun City Board yet. There's other steps that are not being looked at that I feel like should be done before even this vote was taken on this. This paper was passed out at the meeting Tuesday night on the Solid Waste Commission, and there wasn't very much discussion of it, and it was voted on, and it was upset. But, you know, I think people need to know about this. At one time, there was, all the people almost from prospect came to one of our meetings, and it was when the landfill commission started acquiring additional properties. And they filled the room up at the meeting and voiced their concerns about buying more property and doing more landfill down there. And they were told by the landfill commission at that time that it was being bought for a buffer. So, that has proven not to be correct. So, anyway, I would just like to be able to see more information. They hired Dr. Bacchus to do a study on this. I have not been able to see any of the paperwork from Dr. Bacchus. He's supposed to be figuring the amount of money that the Solid Waste Commission gets a dollar a ton, and we don't know how much Sandtech gets. They set the price at the landfill, the tipping fee. So, it would be interesting to know how much money. Another thing, they are wanting to, they are wanting to be promised 641 tons of waste per day for 270 days per year, for a total of 173,070 tons per year. Well, right now, the landfill is off, is not bringing in 641 tons. It's short of that. So, they will want some kind of compensation for that number, and I don't know how that number would reach. But as of right now, the money for closure, post-closure of the landfill when it's full is short. So, if there's more landfilling done, there's going to have to be more figuring done on the amount of money toward the taxpayers. We'll have to support that. My concern of Tennessee National, my concern of the Lighthouse Project down there, they're both excellent tax bases. I just don't want to see anything done that's going to affect that because that would mean the rest of us will be picking up the tab. And that's about all I have to say. I'll, hush, I could talk more about this because I've been living it for many, many years. But I'll answer any questions if anybody has a question, or Dennis, would you like to add?
You know, where to start? I don't know by any means a smooth talker, but I can prove it. You know, I just do it in my own way. About two and a half years ago, I was sitting up here, and me and the mayor used to go to the Solid Waste Commission meeting. And about two and a half years ago, or something like that, Commissioner Kelly Brewster and Larry Jameson from the Solid Waste Commission came to one of our meetings and said they were worried that they were fixing to sign a contract with Sandtech, you know, the extension. They were talking about there were going to be a $9 million shortfall. They had been an audit done, and there was going to be a $9 million shortfall at the end of this contract that the taxpayers in Cedar Island County, you know, county was going to have to put the bill for it. And I know nobody else had their taxes raised. So, we went to the meeting, and Mayor Greenway made a decision to change people up there, and we had talked about it, and thought we'd go there and see if I could do the best I could do up there. So, when I did, and he finally put me on there, you and Pat Hunter were so good. It was unbelievable because I got into something, I didn't even understand what elevations and all that stuff. It was like, wow, I had no idea. I had no idea, I thought you just threw trash in the trashcan. You know, I had no idea. But Pat gave me a notebook, it was so helpful. I mean, it's unbelievable how helpful y'all was with me and how knowledgeable y'all was with the thing. So, I went in a good faith, and I've done the best I can do. And we negotiated for two years, or two and a half years. And I really feel that this is probably the best that I think that we're going to be able to get. And it's supposed to have a million six to the good after it's closed, after post-closure care and everything. And I'm like you, you know, as far as the 641 tons, I don't see it coming. So, that's why Councilman James and them, we've all talked about, and I sent them an email about there should be a surety bond or something at the end, making sure that those funds had to be there. In all fairness, I've done, I feel I've done the best I can do. This is not a vote by any means on any kind of contract. The vote was to go ahead and to pass this out to the city council and to pass it out to the North City, the three-state charter, and the county commission to pass it out and to get TDEC started on the, you know, paperwork they had to do. But this by no means is any kind of contract that has been signed. It's not what the vote was. The vote was just for me to start discussing with the city council and Mayor Aitken's discussing with North City and Mayor Bradshaw discussing with county. It has none of, it's no final contract. It's just me coming back and telling these five guys right here, I've done about the best I think I can get done on it. And it's up to them, it's not up to me. I mean, I just want at least five. I appreciate everything you've done, and I really think it's the best we're going to get. I mean, I know you don't like the landfill, I don't blame you, I don't like it either. I wish it wasn't in Loudoun, and I always wonder why all the man bills are in Loudoun. Why can't we put them somewhere else? Why does that have to be in Loudoun all the time? Well, that's just me. But we really didn't vote to sign any contract or anything like that.
Well, that's, I don't think that's the way Sandtech took it because, you know, they said this was their final offer, so I think they just tossed it out there, whether you take it or not.
Well, I think they did give it to us and say this is probably about the best they were going to do.
But the, we don't really need a landfill anymore. Two of our largest, Tate Mile and Kimberly Clark, have dropped out. And Sandtech is taking waste in within 150-mile radius now, which we are a single-county-only landfill. You can check that with the TDEC in Nashville. We're not supposed to be taking out of county waste. We don't know what's coming in. First of the month, there was a fire down there, and they said they think it was from taking a hot load. Well, I don't know what a hot load was and where it come from, which I would like to know. But there's just, you know, we really truly don't need another big landfill started, taken in, out of county waste. That is just a burden on the taxpayer players because there's a 30-year-plus time afterwards that we're responsible for any problems out there. Sandtech's not going to be responsible, it's going to be the taxpayers here.
Yeah, they're going to be responsible for 41 acres, please sign that. They'll be responsible for 41 acres?
Yeah, but it's starting a new landfill, Dennis. I mean, we're starting a new landfill, which we don't really need.
Miss Longmire?
Yes.
I spoke with Steve Field after the meeting, and Steve and I, he's the chairman of the Solid Waste Commission, and we're going to meet here before the end of the month. And what we're going to do is talk about the back and forth and where the commission and Sandtech feel that they've come to an impasse and it's time to have a wider conversation. So, Steve and I are going to talk about the numbers, the estimates presented, and the underlying assumptions that they're based on. And then, together with Councilman Stewart, we're going to bring that full discussion back to the council at next month's workshop. And that predates the next Solid Waste Commission meeting because what the commission wants is feedback from the stakeholders that, whether they're on the right path or not. And that's where the next step in the conversation will go at next month's workshop.
Well, I've been, I know this, the North City and the county, but I've been thinking all the time and saying it, in fact, that they should be included in more of the talks, which you can't just wait till the end. The state, they were here the first of all this. Pat Flood, he's over TDEC in Nashville, and he, that permit request from Sandtech had been over there in Nashville just laying around for like two or three years. And so, they canceled that. So, the whole process is supposed to start all over again. New permit will have to be applied for and things. And this is information that all stakeholders need to know about and be included so they'll know what's going on. This is so much information that's talked about because you've been coming, so you're learning, and it needs to be questioned and looked into. This affects a lot of people. Their pocketbooks, their homes, my well, water. So, I'm glad that's okay, y'all.
I appreciate you working with us.
I would like to say Allen needs to help me a lot, and Pat helped me a lot, and I really appreciate y'all for what y'all did. I know y'all passionate about this, and I just kind of walked into, y'all nice people, and y'all. I'm just saying. Y'all been nice to me, and I appreciate it.
I can't speak to North City or the county, how they communicate back with their boards and council. Councilman Stewart keeps us aware if we need information. Two of the significant changes in this contract is under consideration. At one time, Sandtech was running 30 landfills. We were the only one of those 30 that Sandtech did not have to close previous contract. The contract coming up now being considered, previously Sandtech set fees. We had no feedback or no input. Now, there'd be an annual review, or is it every five years?
Every year.
Annual review to adjust those costs, those fees, to ensure that we have money at the end of the contract to close and maintain the landfill. That's the primary purpose of trying to get this contract, you know, in some kind of shape. There are a lot of questions with it. The vote the other night was just to consider it, to pass it around, let people have other input in it, the three stakeholders. And that's where we're going with it. So, your input's important. We need to hear, and that's what the process is hopefully going to bring us, better information.
I'm going to add a debate.
I believe that's fair. And they're good.
I'd like to retire for me. I would like the landfill closed and go away. And that's possible. I tell you, it is possible. Nobody wants to hear me say that, but it is a good possibility that we can get away with it. Thank you, everybody. For listen.
Anyone else have anything? Say if not, we'll move on. Next item is a motion for the Loudoun County Visitors Bureau donation.
Yes, last month, the Visitors Bureau re-asked for additional contribution from city funding. Just some context for this, back in budget season, this request was made, but the county and the North City both contribute many more dollars than the city of Loudoun does to the Visitors Bureau. And it didn't make a lot of good common sense. Well, it does make good common sense for us to follow their lead because they contribute so much more money. Now, I'm not saying that our contribution is insignificant because it is significant. Our funding comes from tax dollars and not from hotel motel tax. But we had received word that the request may not be granted, but it did not bow where it was. And it was just a timing thing. The Visitors Bureau did come back and ask for additional funding. Please know that the North City did increase their funding threefold, and the county increased its funding as well. And we're recommending to increase our funding to the Loudoun County Visitors Bureau's request of $20,000. And this budget amendment, consider it tonight, will do just, this is up from the $4,500 previously.
So, we're increasing it 15.5, is what?
Yes, sir.
Rachel Baker from the Visitors Bureau let me know she would not be here tonight.
Yeah, I came and replaced her, representing the Visitors Bureau. She had a visitation, she had attended.
She did present at the workshop, the justification for the increase. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Hayne? We're ready to vote, I would take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Visitors Bureau request for increase 15.5 for up to $20,000, put your bid.
Have a motion to approve the request from Loudoun County Visitors Bureau to $20,000. Second. Motion in second, any other discussion? Those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passed. Next item we have is a motion to consider Dunbar Rosenwood Rosenwald School grant.
We've had, this has been discussed at multiple workshops, the merits of funding the Rosenwald School. There was a consensus reached, I believe, at the last workshop that a $10,000 contribution would be warranted, and that's the recommendation, and that's why this motion is before you.
Just for clarification, is that a, they spend and rematch grant? Is that how we find?
I think that was the discussion.
The matching grant.
Get that clear.
Basically, we're just allocating the money and then they match what, rematch what they spend. Up to $10,000? What was that?
Yes, the motion is worth a match.
Okay.
More discussion? Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the match and grant $10,000.
Motion. A motion to approve the grant $10,000 to Dunbar School.
Second.
Motion in the second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That motion passes. Next item we have is an ordinance on the second reading to amend the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget.
This is the second reading, and it's been properly advertised. The budget amendment supports the two motions just considered and voted upon along with a transfer of accrual leave benefits for an employee of the city to transfer to the utilities.
Make a motion to approve on second reading to amend the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget.
All serious.
We have a motion in the second to amend the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget. I don't think there's any other discussion, Mr. Hayne.
Councilman Harris?
Councilman Stewart?
Councilman Millsaps?
Aye.
Mayor Greenway?
Aye. That ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item we have is a resolution to authorize contract documents with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for funding the riverfront pedestrian walkway.
Yes, this is an 80%, 80-20 grant for construction funding up to $1 million from TDOC for a riverwalk downtown. It's a construction only, it would not support the preliminary engineering and design. I'm having a meeting this Thursday with the University of Tennessee School of Engineering. They like this project, they like that it's grant-supported, and just like they did with the Marina project last year, which was the backbone and leverage we used to apply for that last year's commission grant, UT is going to, as a class project, provide the engineering for the riverwalk. Now, they can't sign off on the engineering, we'll have an engineer do that, but this will cut our costs tremendously.
You can take what they provide to you.
Yes, sir.
Now, this is a refundable, I mean, this is reimbursed grant, right? Their grants. So, we spend it and they reimburse us, is that right?
Make a motion to authorize contract documents with Tennessee Department of Transportation for funding a riverfront pedestrian walkway.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to authorize contract documents with Tennessee Department of Transportation for funding a riverfront pedestrian walkway. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Resolution passes. Next item we have is a resolution to authorize the purchase of the Pac-Mac Knuckle Boom Brusher.
The Public Works Director Ellis Scruggs presented this piece of equipment at the workshop along with its justification. It's kind of become the standard for rubbish pickup here in East Tennessee. Alcoa, Maryville, and Sevierville have equipment like this, and it's recommended to purchase this as a budgeted capital expenditure.
Discuss that, it's a whole workshop, is there any other discussion?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the Pac-Mac Knuckle Boom Brusher.
I'll say it.
We have, second.
I'll say, I get named.
Okay, try to say it. Have a motion in the second to authorize the purchase of the Pac-Mac Knuckle Boom Brusher. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passed. Next item is a resolution to approve out-of-state travel for arts and recreation personnel.
Yeah, I apologize for not bringing this up to the seminar at a workshop, but Mark Carroll would like to send two employees for training to maintain our playground infrastructure. The Tennessee requirement that permission be sought and granted for out-of-state travel, and this training seminar just happens to be in North Carolina.
Is it over a weekend, through the week?
It's three weeks.
Four, how many days is this thing?
It'll be there three times.
Where's, where's the training at?
State School in North Carolina.
Where?
We had several options, and that happened to be the one.
That's the closest one.
There was one from Auburn in South Florida.
There's some primary maintenance, sure.
It's a CPI SI school, it's National Arts and Recreation Association. They do different locations across the region. Happens to be the location that we're.
You've got the ribbon cutting on here, you said Wednesday, September nineteenth. Is that on this letter? That still, when it, when they, that's a lion, that's a lion's paw, or? Make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel. Parks and Rec.
Have a motion to approve out-of-state travel for Parks and Rec personnel. In a second.
I'll say it.
A motion in a second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Resolution passes. Next item, Chairman Sucker. Chief from Baker, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes.
Anything can UT be born?
No, I had my new meter put in today.
Well, is it running back?
Smart, smart, oh, it's too smart for that.
I'll tell you what my smartphone did in that meeting.
That's it.
Take some beer, boy?
Councilman Harris, a grant opportunity to, to, just to let you know, we talked about the, you know, approving the Dunbar Rosenwald School grant. Also, the Loudoun County Community Fund, which the mayor appointed me to be on this board. We've created a Loudoun County Community Fund now. We have grant opportunity open. Here's a press release that I've given copies out for. It's a grant, it's open now, they can go online, any nonprofit church, school, things like that, tax-exempt, five-one, C three. They can go online, it's open from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. Primary range from one thousand to three thousand. And it will be awarded first of the year. But press release has been given to the Newshare, and it'll be in the paper. Just wanted to make y'all aware of it. So, that's something else. If, Mark, if you could let maybe Rufus Smith or Miss Fields, somebody know they can go online, here's, here's some information you can take to let them know just to go and apply for it, and they can get some more grant funding there.
Just wanted to mention that.
Back up just a second, Mr. Payne, what you have?
Just wanted to tell you that we, we appreciate the city's help in working, coordinating the move, and the fiscal help, too, that we're receiving in the community. We move Saturday, the Visitors Bureau from the depot to our relocation on War Street. We're, we're glad to be in downtown Loudoun and stay here. We're open for business. I think anybody comes in, came in today, or, or tomorrow, would be amazed if things are in place for business. Come down and see us sometime.
We appreciate your effort to rejan, re-energize.
Hey, Greer's helped us a lot, riding the box truck, that helped us a lot. We got that lot done in just one load.
Councilman Harris, this back is a lot stronger than mine.
It was then, it ain't now.
You got a strong back, you got a strong mind.